Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, October the 15th, 2024. We welcome you here this evening as we normally do. We'll get started in just a minute with our moment of silence, and we'll remain standing to, as we do our pledge allegiance for our country. As we go to that time tonight, I would like for you to keep, continue to keep our community and all of us involved in it, our staff, all the people have done so many things over these last two weeks. Please keep all of our departments in the city in your thoughts and prayers. All our county, our other municipalities, and our neighboring communities who are all still under all kinds of difficulties that are going on. Please continue to pray for everyone that's involved out there. And it's been a, it's been a difficult time. We are recovering, and we hope we will continue to and move forward. It's just been one of those times that you never would hope would ever come to a community, but it has. And we've got to continue to move forward. A lot of good things are happening right now, and a lot of people want to get back, and they're working toward that. So please continue to keep everyone in your thoughts and prayers. Please continue to pray, if you will, for Councilmember Ike Perkins. Ike is not with us tonight. He was in the hospital for several days, had some issues going on. He's doing better, but he had to react, reaction to some medicine today, and so he is trying to recover from that, and we hope everything will be well. But please keep him in your thoughts and prayers as well as we go to this. And also those in Florida who just experienced the problems that were there as another hurricane came through. So please keep all those people in our thoughts and prayers. So much to pray for in our communities across the nation. So I will now ask you, if you will. Oh, yeah, and Fire Chief, former Fire Chief Bobby Coffey also passed away, and please keep Chief Coffey's family in your thoughts and prayers as well. Well, you chief very well, a fine gentleman, led our fire department for many years, and please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers as well. Now, please rise and join us, moment of silence and our pledge. Thank you.
We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would like to quickly mention our, the bike thing that we had here that came through, the Mountains to Coast. That was the 25th anniversary of the Cycle North Carolina. It came through and started in Lenore last week or so, and went through all the way and ended up at Oak Island. We have a shirt here that we're going to get framed, and all the members of the Cycle North Carolina, some of the riders. We had several that rode from Lenore, and we had them sign it as well, and our council and everything. So we're going to get Phillip Harper, and I want to say thank you to Phillip and the recreation staff for a lot of hard work. That was a busy, busy couple of days, Phillip. It was. Great, great job by your staff and many others who helped out. We appreciate the loan of vans from several of our local churches and our recreation van as well, that we hauled people, bikers, from downtown and back and forth and all over Lenore, and we wanted them to get a sampling of our wonderful community. And they enjoyed it here, I think, and had ate and stayed here and did things before they left on Monday morning, heading out for the ride, and ended up at Oak Isle, Ocean Isle Beach was the final leg of that. And I talked to several riders who I knew that were on it, and they all got along very well, had a great time and all that. So just wanted you to see the shirt, and we appreciate that. We'll get this framed and put up in a nice place. And again, thank you for everyone who was involved in that. So we'll move on now to, we do have Councilmember Chrissy Thomas has joined us on the phone. We are able to do that, I think, because Mr. Counselor, former counselor, but counselor, we can do it because of the
Continuing state of emergency as a result of the
Okay. So we're glad to have Councilmember Thomas that joined us on the phone tonight. We are, Councilmember Presswood is out of town, and Councilmember Perkins is under the weather. So we're glad to have them on there. Our first, tonight, our first order is a special recognition. This is our City of Lenore Customer Service Team. Tonight, they will recognize Master Patrol Officer Chris Smith and the 2023 Annual Golden Ticket Award winner. Golden tickets are a way for our city employees to recognize their coworkers for going above and beyond the normal responsibilities, provide service beyond measure to our fellow staff and to the public. Joshua and Crystal, who are co-chairs of the service team, are here, and then I'm going to have Chief Phelps come up and do it in just a minute, Bob. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Hi, my name is Crystal McCurry. I'm a dispatcher at Lenore Police Department, and I just took co-chair of the customer service team. The customer service team wanted me to explain a little bit about what golden tickets are. Golden tickets are a way to recognize and reward employees who exhibit service beyond measure in carrying out day-to-day activities in their jobs. Employees who receive a golden ticket will know that their hard work is being appreciated, and they'll have the opportunity to win time off. If you see a coworker going above and beyond the call, please submit a golden ticket to the customer service team to recognize their hard work. How it works, when you see or hear a fellow employee providing service beyond measure by going above and beyond their normal work duties, take a moment to submit a golden ticket. It's easy. A customer, a customer service team member will create a golden ticket certificate and present it to the winner. A copy will also be sent to the employee's department head and the human resources manager to be placed in the employee's personal file. Each quarter, the customer service team will vote on the most deserving golden ticket nomination for the quarter. The winner will received, receive an extra four hours of pay of, sorry.
Time off.
At the end of the year, the CST will vote on the most deserving golden ticket nomination for the entire year. The yearly winner will receive eight hours' time paid off. Our 2023 winner is SRO Chris Smith. A brief summary of the letter received for Smith's nomination. SRO Smith went to a call involving a juvenile dealing with mental health issues. The mother said SRO Smith was the first responsible adult to notice her son's actions could be a medication issue. Before the change, doctors had suggested her son be sent to a home for boys with mental health issues. The mother says, "We were on a hopeless path, but SRO Smith's suggestions changed, have changed our lives." You will be happy to know, our son is in high school, taking all honors classes, and on the AB Honor Roll. And his teachers describe him as being helpful and kind. "We live a peaceful life, and our son has a bright future, and we have SRO Smith to thank for that. You saved our family, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts, always remembering what you have done, and will continue to pray for your health and safety on the job. May God bless you all the days of your lives." SRO Smith's nomination be all others because he exhibited these Lenore customer service keys. He was personable by demonstrating caring and patience. He was proactive by making customers feel important. He had effective communication by being a good listener. Professionalism by taking time to show interest in our customers. Equitable service by treating others with respect and being sensitive to the situation. And successful service recovery by listening effectively and showing empathy and concern. I work with SRO Smith often, and I asked his coworkers to describe him with one word, and those words were kind, humble, and genuine. As someone who works with SRO Smith, I can tell you those descriptions are accurate. SRO Smith makes me proud to be an employee of Lenore Police Department and the City of Lenore.
The letter that we got was a lot longer.
It was three pages.
And if you read it, it'll make you tear up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
I was worried I was going to have to read the letter. I wasn't sure that I was going to be able to get through it without getting emotional. The first time I read it, when we recognized him at the department, I did get emotional. And the reason for that is when you, when you heard this lady's words, you, you could just feel how appreciative she was of Chris's involvement and the help that, that he was able to provide that family. And as a parent myself, I understand that. And when there's something going on with our children, you know, we want to make it right. And so it was obvious that Chris did a good job of evaluating and seeing that, you know, this, there was more going on here than just bad behavior. You know, and in as law enforcement, you know, we have good days and bad days. But what we hope is at the end of the day, and the end of the shift, and the end of our career, you know, we've been able to help some people, and we've been able to help families. And this is a great example of officers do it day in, day out. And a lot of times, we as officers never know the help that we give somebody in the community. So I really do appreciate that mom taking the time to write the letter, to share that, or we would have never known. And it's just a great example of, of the involvement, especially in our schools with our kids, the SROs have on a daily basis with the children. And so, Chris, congratulations. We're proud of you.
Thank you. Well, I really don't have much to say, other than after that call that night, that changed my career path at the Lenore Police Department. Directly after, I was going through some time with my mom. She was dealing with COVID and was on life support. So they're coming to open for an SRO position. So that kind of led me down the path after that night of that call to take the opportunity to go into the school system. So if I can change one child's life, I like to change others. So that's, that's the way I like to be. But, you know, I don't want to say owe me credit, owe the Lord credit, because he was with me that night and put the words in my mouth without the tell mama. So, but thank y'all.
Thank you. Got your camera?
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me say one thing, Chris. From reading that letter, you didn't change one person's life. You changed a whole family. And that's just, you know, that was just wonderful.
And he does it every day. During the summer at the Blackberry Festival, you could see the children from his school run up to him, so happy to tell them about how his summer's going. So.
That's great. Everybody take a step back. There we go. Crystal up here, Kimmy up here. See Ty, see everybody. Chief, if you go this way, just over here. Let's get Grandma up here. I can't even see you back there. She's high. All right, is it okay if the little one back there hide? Okay. Let Shelby go first. Everybody look right here. Okay. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. All right, he's with the news, Tom. Okay. I'm going to do a couple without a flash, and then a couple with a flash. Okay. Ready? One, two, three, cheese. Burgers. All right, with a flash. One, two, three. Look at me, little man. All right.
All right. Thank you. That was very nice. Congratulations again, Officer Smith. We appreciate your service with our City of Lenore Police, for sure. Thank you. All right, we'll move on then. Tonight, we have several matters scheduled for public hearings. Our first one, item A, is a rezoning. This is for 134 Ideal Drive Southeast. We'll hold this hearing to consider a quest to rezone 134 Ideal Drive Southeast. That's North Carolina PIN number 2758560560. From R12, that's medium density, single family, to R6, multifamily. Planning Board approved the request, and staff recommends adoption of the proposed rezoning based on the following consistency statement. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan because it establishes zoning that is more consistent with the adopted future land use designating the area to remain medium density residential and better matches the existing development pattern. This will ensure fair and efficient growth, reduce nonconformities, and establish sensible, straightforward zoning standards. The proposed amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes infield development at appropriate densities, making more efficient use of the city's existing infrastructure investments while creating opportunities for affordable housing for people in all stages of life. All right, I will open the public hearing, and I will recognize our planning director, Hannah Williams, to give us a little background on this.
Certainly. Thank you so much, Mayor. So this case on Ideal Drive, it is a standard rezoning case from R12 to R6. The subject property today is a single-family house at 134 Ideal Drive. There's an accessory dwelling behind the house and in the rear, and then also a large 3,000-square-foot workshop on the northern side. The owner rents out the house and is seeking to sell his rental property, and he would like to retain the workshop. In order to do that, he was trying to subdivide the property, but the resultant lots are both not big enough for the R12 zoning district, which requires 12,000 square feet. So he's pursuing R6, a zone that requires 6,000 square foot minimum lot sizes. So Ideal Drive, this is right near US 321. There's several, it's kind of an oddy area. There is quite a bit of residential, but there's also Whittnall Towing is right there. The former Kingdom Hall is right there. Iglesia Cristo Vive, a church, and a former industrial building is right there as well. So it's just kind of a transitional area. Ideal Drive kind of functions as a ramp between 321 and Countryside Drive. R6, it does introduce several other uses that aren't in R12. It does introduce double wides as a use, apartments as a use. But it's important to weigh that information, but there's not going to be a large redevelopment on a third of an acre lot. So an apartment complex is unlikely to happen here. Any kind of substantial land use change would require, would be a bigger, bigger area and require more land. So I wouldn't be too concerned about the, the land use changes here. And, and there's just quite a bit of predictability where the single family is concerned. But this would just enable the property owner to be able to retain this workshop for his personal use, and it could be redeveloped into residential uses later, and R6 allows for that flexibility. So that, those are my main talking points for now. I'm available for questions. Also, the property owner and applicant is here tonight as well. If you have questions, better suited to him.
Okay. Thank you, Hannah. Any questions, Hannah, so far concerning this? Okay, thank you. We are in the public hearing, so I'll open it up. If there's anyone who would like to address the council concerning this public hearing and this rezoning, please come forward, give us your name and address this time. All right, seeing, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any action or discussion.
Mayor, I, you know, whenever I look at decisions like this, I like to see what the recommendation is and how it fits with our, our comprehensive plan. And this, this fits exactly with what the plan intends. It says it does ensure for, for fair and efficient growth. I think it meets those requirements. So I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning request.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Perdue to approve the rezoning request for 134 Ideal Drive as presented. No other discussion. I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chrissy, you still on?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, aye.
Thank you. All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously, which would be five, five zero on that. Thank you. All right. We'll move on then to our second public hearing tonight. It's also a rezoning. This is for the northeast corner of Hickory Boulevard. This is Highway 321 and Victoria Court intersection. We'll hold the hearing to consider rezoning the property located on the northeast corner of Hickory Boulevard at the intersection of Highway 321 and Victoria Court intersection, North Carolina PIN number 2758732805. As the applicant, Southwood Realty Company, is requesting to rezone the property, split zone B2 and R15, to be exclusively zoned as B2, general business, to allow for a proposed multifamily development. The planning board approved this request, and staff recommends approval based on the following consistency statement. The future land use map identifies the subject properties as existing non-residential zones, but is surrounded by the existing medium density residential and existing high-density residential. The plan states that predominantly single-family zoning districts should be more flexible to allow multifamily development as a permitted use with certain conditions. Additionally, the comprehensive plan calls for development of quality multifamily buildings as a growth destination for both professionals and retirees alike. By changing the zoning designation from R15 to B2, this area would have greater flexibility to achieve these policy concepts. Staff finds the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan. The change is reasonable and in the public interest because it accommodates future residential development in a convenient and centralized location, which can be better served by city infrastructure when expanded. So I'll open the public hearing for the, this rezoning, and I'll again recognize our planning director, Hannah, to, for comments.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property. This five-acre tract is split zone B2 and R15, which really aren't compatible for development. And this apartment developer called Southwood Realty has a parcel under contract as well as an adjacent five-acre property that is totally zoned B2. So it's just to the north and west of the subject property. And they are interested in developing 136-unit complex, and a complex at the southern end of Lenore would just be a great place to add housing. It's right on a transportation corridor, aids in housing for area employers, students, professors at the community college, as well as it's right between the two App State campuses, and just adds to the rental stock. But with rezonings, they're not tied to a site plan. They're not tied to a particular use, so it's important to consider all the uses that could come with a B2 zoning. B2 is Lenore's most flexible zoning district. It, it allows for many types of residential and commercial uses, but it does have strict form-based design standards as well. This property, it does border Lakeside Terrace, the Lakeside Terrace neighborhood, but no, there will be little to no impact on that neighborhood by developing this parcel. There, there's a physical, topographical change between this property and the rear yards of the Lakeside Terrace homes that kind of come down towards a creek. No traffic is going to be routed through this neighborhood. So I would say that there's little to no impact from, from this rezoning. And all of the residences that abut the subject property, they have the required 35-foot rear yard, and most of them have over 100 feet from, between their house and their rear property line. And if multifamily is established here, a 15-foot vegetated buffer is required so they can, what's preferred is that they retain this mature tree line that exists today, and if anything happens to it, it would need to be replaced with a landscape, a 15-foot wide landscape buffer. So it would just be difficult for any land use category to develop on a split-zoned parcel, and it would be difficult to intensely develop B2 right next to R15 on the same parcel. So it makes sense to rezone to one district or the other. And with the 321 frontage here, it's just a prime place to expand B2.
Which B2 is transitional, is it not?
B2 is general business, and so it's a pretty flexible zone. It's pretty permissive.
With the rezoning of this, do we anticipate a new access point from 321, or do we anticipate using the ideal way entrance and expanding?
It looks like the access is off Victoria Court.
Yeah, so
I mean, I'm sorry, Victoria Court. I have the other place in my head.
So this rezoning is not tied to a site plan. I've seen conceptual drawings, but it just wasn't appropriate to include in the rezoning since it's not tied to that. And the developers also have the adjacent track to the northwest of it under contract as well, and that has quite a bit of 321 frontage as well. So their, their tie-ins will likely be at least two driveways off of 321.
And that's a DOT issue anyway. We don't have any say in that, but I would imagine they would require a decent deceleration lane going in there off of the 55 mile an hour zone, so.
It would, it seems, it seems likely.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, Hannah? Okay, thank you. All right, we are in the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to address the council concerning this rezoning request, please do so at this time. If you will, please come forward, give us your name and address.
I did want to state for the record that the applicants and developers are in the audience tonight, and if, if you have any specific questions of them.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no one to come forward on that, I will close the public hearing. I'll turn it over to council for any discussion and/or action.
Mr. Mayor, just like the last one, this does fall in line with our comprehensive plan. And as you say, I think it's a great opportunity for additional housing, especially with access to the southern end of the county, where there's more growth and more need of that housing. But I would like to make a motion to accept this rezoning request.
Okay. We have a motion for Mayor Pro Tim Stevens to approve the rezoning request for this parcel as presented. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Chrissy. Chrissy?
Aye.
Thank you. Don't let me forget you over there now. Thank you for that. Okay, we'll go to the third public hearing tonight. This is an ordinance. This is concerning This is concerning electronic message board signage. We hold this hearing to consider amending Appendix A of Lenore City Code by ordinance as related to sign regulations regarding electronic message signs and eliminate, illuminate, is that eliminating?
Well, it can be illuminating, but this is eliminating.
Yeah, it's supposed to be. I think that's illuminating, isn't it? Or is it?
No, it's eliminating.
It's illuminating, okay. Oh, eliminating duplicative code sections, providing for severability. Good God, why don't you put a...
I didn't draft this, by the way. Can I come from the lawyer?
Geez.
Sure sounds like it.
Severability, codification, and an effective date. The applicant, Doug Perkins of Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, has proposed that the sign code allow for electronic message boards, that's E M B, in residential districts. Planning Board also analyzed and made recommendations in other zoning districts. So I'll open the public hearing, and I'll again, let our planning director, Hannah Williams.
All right. Thank you so much. Right. Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church is the church requesting this change. I also want to acknowledge that Meadowbrook Baptist Church has followed this because they they do have a vested interest in this sign ordinance change, and they are also in, they are in the audience tonight. And yes, staff just took the opportunity not just to look at allowing electronic message boards in residential districts for churches and public service facilities, not just for residential, but also in our lesser zoning districts, because if you allow it in residential, it makes sense to also look at it in the commercial districts where it's also not allowed. Planning Board discussed the changes in August and September, thoroughly vetting this. And I'll just refer to the resources packet that I had put together for September planning boards. That's in your packet tonight. There was just a lot of information about electronic message board signage specifications and regulations. We also put together information on nearby town zoning ordinances regarding electronic signs, where it's allowed and prohibited, and how they regulate intensity, and that also informed how we drafted these ordinance changes. I'll say Hickory, Wilkesboro, and Valdez, they all have design and operating standards for electronic message boards, similar to what's in the proposed ordinance tonight. So I'll just go quickly through the ordinance changes, and if we have any questions, I'll try to answer them as best as I can. So we are adding and expanding design and operating standards for the electronic signs, where they were kind of minimal standards before. Planning Boards recommending to change the timing of display changes from three seconds to eight seconds with a two-second transition time. We're looking at adding a maximum brightness standard of 5,000 nits during the day, 500 nits at nighttime, requiring electronic message boards to be installed with a dimmer control and a photocell sensor that adjusts to ambient light conditions, and requiring certification from the sign manufacturer that the display is set to these standards. And this really just gives us the ability to ask for the spec sheet and verify that the sign's going to meet the standards prior to installation, and that we should cut down on code enforcement. Next in the ordinance is the change that Mount Pilgrim was requesting, allowing religious institutions and public service facilities in residential districts, and O and I, B one, B five, and B six to allow for up to 50% of their copy area to be, of the signs' copy area to be electronic message board. And then this also requires the electronic message board to be shut off at nighttime hours between 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. And finally, we also looked at electronic message board regulations in downtown and on historic properties, because E M Bs were conflicting in different parts of the code on whether they were allowed in the B three Central Business District, the downtown zoning district. So Planning Board proposes to prohibit electronic message boards as ground-mounted signs in all of B three. Building-mounted E M Bs would still be allowed in B three outside of the National Register Historic District. And they also propose to prohibit E M B signs on any historic place on the National Register within Lenore's zoning jurisdiction. So any designated historic property would not be allowed to display an electronic message Also in that memo was the consistency statement adopted by Planning Board, which I believe Mayor just read to you, and Planning Board, after two months of discussing this, unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance, finding it fair and balanced.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of Hannah concerning this ordinance proposal? Okay. Seeing none? Then again, we're in the public hearing, so I'll open it to anyone in the audience who would like to address the council concerning this particular ordinance change for electronic message board signage. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. I'll turn it over to City Council for any discussion and/or action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this ordinance as presented.
A motion from Councilmember Beal, that we approve the ordinance for electronic message board signage as presented by the planning staff. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. And that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. We'll move to our next one, which is a public hearing ordinance amendment, and I will have to, at this time, step down. I am a member of the Caldwell, UNC Health Caldwell Board of Directors, so I cannot actually discuss this at this time. I will ask to be recused. Do I need to vote on that?
Yeah, I think they need to vote, too.
Make a motion to excuse the mayor.
Thank you.
To recuse the mayor.
And that, too.
All right. I'll let you handle that, and I'll put step down here.
Actually, want to vote on that?
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah. Let's do it.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We have a motion to recuse and excuse the mayor, and possibly accuse him. But all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by like sign?
Chrissy.
Chrissy?
Aye.
That motion carries five to zero. Thank you, sir. And just to let you know, this is an ordinance amendment for light pole banners. A public hearing will be held to discuss amending Appendix A of the Lenore City Code as related to sign regulations regarding light pole banners by ordinance and eliminating duplicative code sections, providing for severability, codification, and an effective date. Wasn't that good? Okay. The applicant, Emma Shell of UNC Health Caldwell, proposed that the sign code allow for the light pole banners on private poles for certain land uses. While the Planning Board did not recommend adoption of the ordinance as presented at the September meeting, staff has drafted an ordinance of narrower scope for the City Council's consideration. And this is a public hearing. Hannah, our director.
Great. Right. We did have an outside applicant requesting this change as well. Pardon me. Planning Board discussed the changes in September and found that the ordinance change estimated was too broad. It was to allow pole banner, light pole banners to be installed on privately maintained light poles for charitable military service organizations. And it's just, it's not too common in our region. Few areas allow the light pole banners. They're not permitted in Hickory, Wilkesboro, Morganton, or Boone. But I did, I drafted the ordinance and learned more about pole banners through the City of Charlotte zoning ordinance. And as stated, Planning Board found the ordinance too broad, and in between Planning Board and this public hearing, we, staff narrowed the scope to fewer uses, to only public service facilities, so not to charitable or military service organizations, but only for public service facilities. And I will read the definition of a public service facility for the record. A facility that is owned, operated, or financed in whole or in part by any public or governmental entity, and is dedicated to the provision of services to the general public. This includes public safety facilities, EMS, police, fire protection, schools and education, hospitals and healthcare, and the public provision of social services. But the key is that it's financed in whole or in part by a governmental entity. So I'll just briefly discuss what's in the zoning ordinance, and it is in your packets and in, from, for tonight. It would add a definition of the light pole banners. It provides zoning districts where the light pole banners on public service facilities can be located, O and I, B two, B six, B seven, I one, and I two. So our intense or commercial districts and industrial districts. And it states that banners can only be on poles that are owned by and located entirely on the property of the public service facility. So that would exempt, or it would not allow, say, if there's like a dook pole or some kind of light pole further in on property that's outside of the right-of-way, that would not be a permitted location. They have to be the privately maintained light poles on the property. The signs must be on-premise signs. Two banners per pole, up to 12 poles on a site can have banners. The maximum area for the sign is 12 square feet. The original text said 15 square feet, but in the Planning Board discussion, they thought that that was too large. And the signs have to be 12 feet up, so 12 feet of clearance, and they must be mounted perpendicularly to the pole. But again, Planning Board hasn't reviewed the text amendment as I've drafted it. It was, it was just following our discussion at committee of the whole that the scope was narrowed. And so that concludes my summary of the text amendment. The applicant, Emma Shell, is here tonight as a representative of UNC Health, and she can also discuss her motives behind the amendment, or it's up to you what you would like to do next.
I assume this is Emma back here. Emma, is there anything you would like to add? We are in the public hearing.
Hi, my name is Emma Shell, and I live at, my personal address? My personal address?
Yes.
Okay. And I live at 12 Cottage Court in Granite Falls. So I'm here today, as Hannah mentioned, to represent UNC Health Caldwell. We actually do have these banners already. They were put up a few years before I started, and we, Hannah kindly let us know that that was not already approved, and so we wanted to go about getting these official and approved. So currently, we use them just to kind of denote where our campus is at so people can find the hospital easily. We have several different buildings on that one road, and so it's really helpful for people to understand where our, our facility is. Currently, the banners are used for, they currently contain pictures of our staff, so it's local staff taking care of our local community, and we feel it creates a really welcoming environment for visitors and patients. And again, it's just a good way to kind of understand where the hospital is and where its campus is kind of located.
Do the current banners meet the criteria that you...
No, they don't.
They don't?
Well, I mean, it's not compliant with our current ordinance.
Right, because they're not, they're not allowed at all right now.
Right, but the revision that you have...
To the best of my knowledge, the ordinance, as I stated tonight, could accommodate these banners. It could.
Does anybody have any questions for...
I don't have any questions. I've got some comments I'd like to make.
Thank you very much. And we are in the public hearing. If there's anyone else who would like to speak on this subject, please come forward and give your name. Hearing none, we'll turn this over to City Council for discussion.
Well, I, well, I think it's a good public service thing to be able to have from a wayfinding standpoint. I think it's, it would be wise, and I will make a recommendation, in fact, I'll make a motion, that we send this back to the Planning Board since they've not had an occasion to look at your drafted revision. I think this would be something that should, the Planning Board should, should act on and make a recommendation up or down to us. So given the fact that they don't necessarily have all the information as it's been redrafted, I would make a motion that we send this back to the Planning Board for them to consider what you've added, and then bring that to us. I will tell you, I've got some, some concerns. I know Councilmember Stevens and I go back when we had the banner wars years ago, and we had a lot of, a lot of discussion, a lot of hurt feelings about how banners could and could not be displayed in the City of Lenore. So I think this is being as narrowly defined as it is, it excludes a lot of people from being able to do the same thing. So I do have some concerns about that, but I'll hold those until we, we hear a recommendation from the Planning Board. So, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, my motion would be that we send this back to the Planning Board with the current information as drafted by staff.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Purdue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed by like sign?
Aye.
So that's four.
That's...
That's, yeah, that's four.
And actually, you get to vote, too.
That's right.
And I, I would say send it to the board as well. So that's five zero. That motion carries. Thank you, Hannah.
Yeah, thank you.
For your show tonight.
That's good work.
And we'll close the public hearing and turn it back over to Mayor Givens.
Do we need to vote to bring him back in?
No. It was just for this one issue, so we're fine.
Thank you, Joshua. Good job. Thank you. That concludes our, all of our public hearings for the evening, so that's a lot, lot going on. We got, appreciate all the work. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, filling in there. All right. We'll move on to consent agenda items. Tonight, this consists of minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting, Tuesday, September 24th, as submitted. Item B are the City Council minutes of Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Item C is closed session minutes. This is approval of the closed session minutes of Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, meeting as reviewed by the City Council, the City Attorney, and the City Manager. Item D is the North Carolina DOT Disaster Relief Debris, debris removal agreement. This is for the North Carolina Department of Transportation Disaster Relief Debris Removal Agreement as recommended. Item E is the Design/Build Method of Project Delivery. Recommendation is consideration and acceptance of the Design/Build Method of Project Delivery for interior modifications and improvements at the Lenore Aquatics and Fitness Center as part of the current 2022 Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. That's the Partif project. If accepted, a request for qualifications, RFQ, for design-build services will be published to begin the selection process. And item E is a fireworks authorization permit. This is for High Brighton High School. This would be approval of fireworks authorization permit as submitted by High Brighton High School to have fireworks displayed on the requested dates of October 18th, October 25th, November 1st, November 8th, November 15th, November 22nd, and November 29th, with the ability to move dates due to weather. The school has contracted with Team Pyrostar to do the displays. So that's items A through F of the consent agenda. I'll open it up for council for any discussion and/or motion.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda?
A motion from Councilmember Purdue to approve the consent agenda as presented. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. All right. We'll move on then to requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone that would like to address the council tonight, most everyone here, our staff, Jennifer, glad to have you as always on that. And Emma, thank you for being here as well. And Emma, thank you for being here as well. So we appreciate it. If there's any other comments, all right, we'll move on. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council, tonight, all I have is some items for information. The first one is one-stop voting begins on Thursday, October 17th at 8:00 a.m., and that goes to 7:30 p.m. Monday through Friday, November 1st, at the Caldwell County Resource Center, and that's located at 120 Hospital Avenue or the former library. Also on Saturday, November 2nd, from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. Election Day is going to be held on Tuesday, November 5th. The Annual Wood, Fire, Smoke Festival will be held on Saturday, October 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in downtown Lenore. And I don't know if Brenda wants to add anything or not, but I think, I know that Mr. Harris sent out a press release this afternoon with a lot of the activities that you can find on the city's website, citelenor.com, and also on the downtown website. And I think they're going to go back and also take contributions for folks that have been suffering from Hurricane Helene. The Board of Justice will meet on Monday, October 21st at 5:30 in the chambers we're in today. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on Monday, October 21st, 6:00 p.m., and that's going to be held at the Aquatic and Fitness Center. The Committee of the Whole will meet on Tuesday, October 22nd, 8:30 a.m., and that's the third floor city hall. The City of Lenore and also Caldwell County Commission will hold a joint meeting on Tuesday, October 22nd, 5:00 p.m., in these chambers to discuss economic development and also to hold several public hearings. Also, the annual Matt Hatters Pumpkin Patch Parade and Trick or Treat Event downtown will be held Friday, October 25th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. The Halloween Cruisin' event is going to be held Saturday, October 26th, beginning at 3:00 p.m. in downtown Lenore. The Planning Board will meet on October 22nd, 5:30 in these chambers. And the Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, October 30th, at noon at the airport. Any other events or anything I'm missing?
Yeah, the MLK Center, they have their trunk or treat on Halloween.
Correct. And also, I know that, I think Bose is hosting something with the Lenore Rotary that same evening for like a trunk or treat as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Brenda, you want to add anything to what's going on with that downtown?
Sir?
Come on up, tell us.
It's all about... So we are... The DLDA is working in partnership with the United Way, which is a really unique opportunity for us to really accept outreach and connect with lots of different nonprofits that are in the community and give them just a place that they can accept those donations. So even though we're not personally accepting those, everyone can come in so that they can be redistributed, identified by the United Way in Caldwell County, which is really unique, and that it stays in the community. And we still have all of the fun things for kids to do, activities, crafts, inflatables, and still want, still doing demonstrations. We have iron forging, glass blowing, and a chainsaw carver, which is going to be really cool. So we'll still all have those demonstrations, and there's also going to be a drop-off location so you can actually drive up Harper Avenue. And we've also posted a list of things that are identified that are, that we need in the community, too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I should introduce your property. Brenda Floyd is our Economic Development Main Street Director for downtown. Thank you for that. We look forward to Wood, Fire, Smoke this weekend. I hope you will come out downtown. It'd be good to get back and help our merchants, not only downtown, but all over the community and be a part of that. Sure, there'll be some good food going on as well, and a lot of things will be open in downtown, so come out and enjoy that as well, so. No items for council actions, so we'll move on. Any report from our city attorney?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. And I think we've already covered most of everything tonight, and I had to say anything from any of our council members that we need to discuss or talk about.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
I personally would like to tell the staff, thank you for all your hard work during the hurricane recovery and getting the city cleaned up. It was amazing how fast our crews were able to do stuff, and not only public works and streets, but firemen had, and police had chainsaws in their hands, and that made a real impact on the community. They really appreciated all of your hard work. And I'd also like to thank City of Alvamar, because they sent us Bucket Crew, and Granite Falls. Was there anybody else?
In Caldwell Community College.
Community College.
And the Community College. And then also the county's response, just getting things organized so quick. So it's a time where I'm very grateful to be a resident of Lenore and Caldwell County because of the people who work for the city of Lenore and the county. So we appreciate all of you.
And I'll just mention, I know the PD has folks, or had folks, in Marion and also the town of Boone. I know Waters sent folks to Morganton, Marion, and Buncombe County, I believe. So we've been helping our neighbors out, and a lot of them were very fortunate compared to some of our neighbors, let's just say that. But...
Several of us will be attending a FEMA update on Thursday night.
Correct. And debris removal is underway, so it'll come by us sometime soon.
You know where they are kind of running now?
South to north.
South?
To north.
Okay, coming south to north. Okay. Well, we'll see them up this way one day, for sure. If you've got anything you need to get out, get it down to the streets so they can get to it, for sure.
Don't tell them that.
Well, debris-related. Not household furniture and stuff like that.
Very true, very true.
No hazardous waste.
And there is an order that you need to have it in as far as...
Separation of everything.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else to come before us tonight? If not, thank you for being with us. Thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it. We stand adjourned.